City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Holy Spirit, bless everyone present tonight and give peace and good health to all. Give extra comfort to ones that are having health issues and allow them to have a speedy recovery. Allow us to perform our duties in a wise and professional manner as we manage making decisions that affect all aspects of our community. Continue placing your hands of comfort on the people of Ukraine as they fight for their freedom. Encourage the nations of the world to give their support as they fight evil. Heal the wounds and ease the suffering that war has caused. Bless our nation, bring our people together, and continue to allow our nation to be the hope of the world. We ask for all of this in your holy name, and let us all say, amen.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of May the 4th, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Counsel, a motion is in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
Second, Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next item is approval of the minutes from the November 3rd, 2021 work session and regular session, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move to approve.
Motion of approval, Councilman Williams, and Councilman Fawcett?
Second his motion.
Second, Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we now have several special presentations. The first will be a proclamation in recognition of National Public Works Week, followed by a proclamation in recognition of National Police Officer Memorial Week, and a proclamation in recognition of Bike Month. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Our first proclamation is in recognition of National Public Works Week, which extends from May 15th through May 21st, and is served throughout the Commonwealth and the country. With us this evening to accept the proclamation is Carl Marshall, Assistant Director of Public Works.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital of all importance, are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health and well-being of the residents of Suffolk. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other essential structures and facilities. And whereas it is in the public's interest to understand the importance of public works and public works programs. And whereas this year makes the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, do hereby proclaim May the 15th, 2022 through May the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in Suffolk, Virginia. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this fourth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2022.
Most honorable Mayor Dooman, most honorable Vice Mayor Bennett, most honorable City Manager, again, my name is Reverend Carl Marshall, Senior. Oh, can y'all stand up, please? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And on behalf of the Director of Public Works, Mr. Robert Lewis, I proudly accept this declaration. In addition to accepting this declaration, I stand here on behalf of what I personally deem as the most consummate and premier group of public works professionals in the Commonwealth of Virginia. A few months ago, I was trusted to stand on their behalf and to speak to you and ask that we not be left out of the compensation study activities. We did so hoping that our presence would be felt, our voices would be heard, and they were. So for that, Public Works wants to say thank you. In times when jobs appear to be scarce, pay does not seem to be commensurate with skill sets, you all took it upon yourselves to recognize the value of this superior group of professionals, and honor them with a salary that will assist us in the care of our families. Yes, we're still shorthanded. Yes, we're still trying to recruit. But you have armed us with at least one tool that will make working at the City of Suffolk more attractive in this job market. There's a website, www.giventakeinc.com, and they talk about a case study where there was 1,057 cases where there was an immediate and clear request made, and of those 1,057, the requestee was refused only 129 times. But the 928 cases that were filled, thank you was only given 5.5% of the time. I wonder if those who granted those requests ever questioned the gratefulness of those making the request. City Council, Public Works does not want you to have to wonder about our gratefulness, because we're here to say thank you. Just as it is our goal to lead the region in our services to the city, we want to lead our brothers and sisters in the city by saying thank you. Thank you for the increase in salary. Thank you for the implementation of the step plan. Thank you for understanding our struggle. We understand the chore of making the needs and requests of others and still not being appreciated. We understand that there are times when there's more city than there is time and money. We understand the struggles associated with the decisions that you have to make, but we want to let you know, we appreciate what you all did for us, and we say thank you. God bless you, and good night.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, excuse me.
Turned on.
Here we go. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, our second proclamation is recognition of National Police Officer Memorial Week. Also, this extends from May 15th through May 21st, and of course is served throughout the Commonwealth and across the country. With us this evening is Police Chief Alfred Chandler, who will accept the proclamation.
Madam Clerk, please read the proclamation.
Whereas the United States Congress and President declared May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the City of Suffolk joins the nation in honoring the memory of those officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their communities, and whereas the City of Suffolk would like to express its gratitude to the city's law enforcement officers for their contributions in making Suffolk a great place to live. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May the 11th, 2022 through May the 16th, 2022, as National Police Officer Memorial Week, and call upon all residents to express their gratitude to law enforcement officers for their contributions in keeping Suffolk safe. I've herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this fourth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2022.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of council. I want to take this time to thank each and every one of you. Thank you to the City of Suffolk for this proclamation. It means a great deal to us. We know and understand as police officers that sacrifices have to be made, and we never want to forget those who gave the ultimate sacrifice for our community. This is something that is very important. It is a heavy thing that we have to commemorate, but we all, within the Suffolk Police Department and law enforcement at large, and I believe I can also say, the citizens of Suffolk, we will never forget those who paid the sacrifice for us to remain safe. Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, our final proclamation is... Evening. Lost my place. Is recognition of Bike Month, which extends through the month of May. And with us this evening to accept the proclamation is Director of Parks and Recreation, Mark Furlough.
Madam Clerk, please read the proclamation.
Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation, and excellent tool for enjoying our locality's scenic beauty. And whereas throughout the month of May, residents of the City of Suffolk and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through a variety of events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas Suffolk's road and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, and tourism benefits. Whereas the League of American Bicyclists, schools, public transportation, parks, and recreation departments, public health districts, hospitals, police departments, companies, and civic groups will be promoting bicycling in the month of May. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as National Bike Month in the City of Suffolk, Virginia. I witness whereof. I've herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this fourth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2022.
Thank you, Mayor. Talk about tough acts to follow. I would like to say, though, that Parks and Recreation has a couple of bike events planned for the month of May. Coming up this Saturday, we'll be doing, May 7th, we'll be doing our Bike-in movie at Bennett's Creek Park. We'll be showing E.T., the Extraterrestrial, encouraging folks to ride their bikes, or if it's too far to ride, you can pack your bike up in the trunk of your car and drive it in. We'll have a bicycle parade that will start out in the neighborhood and ride into the park before the movie. We'll also have some food vendors out there and stuff. And then we also, on Friday, May 20th, which is Bike-to-Work Day, will be asking citizens to ride their bikes to work. And what a better time than right now, when gas prices are over $4 an hour, to ride your bike to work. And we'll be having a lunchtime bike ride that'll be leaving City Hall at noon. If you're in the downtown area, we'd encourage folks to ride their bikes up to City Hall and join us on that lunchtime bike ride. So thank you.
At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda. An adoption of the entire agenda is presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. If not, then a motion would be appropriate at this time to adopt the entire agenda as presented. Councilman Goldberg?
So moved, Mayor.
A motion for approval, Councilman Goldberg. Councilman Fawcett?
Second his motion.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Dooman.
Please present the items for consideration.
Item number seven, a resolution confirming the appointment of Thomas E. Mueller as Deputy City Attorney, and item number eight, a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2022/2023 annual action plan for the City of Suffolk's Community Development Block Grant Program, and the Western Tidewater Home Consortium Home Investment Partnership Grant Program.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, as stated by the city clerk, item seven is a resolution confirming the appointment of Thomas E. Mueller as Deputy City Attorney. In regards to item eight, at your April 6th work session, the Assistant Director of Community Development provided City Council an overview of the proposed FY 2022/23 annual action plan, which was followed by your public hearing on April 20th. The annual action plan proposes to allocate $497,035 in community development block grant funds, and $400,819 in home funds, in support of certain activities designed to primarily benefit low to moderate income persons. Funds will be accepted and appropriate into the FY 2022/23 operating budget after its adoption and by a future ordinance.
Are there any questions about the items? If not, a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move to approve.
Councilman Johnson?
Second.
We have a motion of Councilman Williams, and a second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2022/23 citywide effective real estate tax increase due to reassessment of 10.81%. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, members of council, at this time, Tealyn Hanson, Director of Public Affairs, will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I am here to give a brief overview of the public hearing that we're asking you to hold on the effective real estate tax rate. The Code of Virginia requires localities to hold a public hearing or reduce the real estate tax rate if reassessments excluding new construction result in 1% or higher increase in total property tax levied during the next fiscal year. The total assessed value of real property exceeded last year's total by 10.81% due to the reassessment for fiscal year 2022/23 excluding the new construction. After concluding this public hearing, City Council may consider adoption of the fiscal year 2022/23 operating capital budget and related ordinances. Staff also recommends reducing the real estate tax rate by 2 cents from $1.11 to $1.09 per $100 of assessed value as presented in the proposed fiscal year... Excuse me, as proposed in the ordinance levying real property taxes for fiscal year 2022/23. At the conclusion of your public hearing, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hanson. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening, Manager, Mayor, council members. My name is Dennis Huer, and I reside at 1744 Millwood Way. I accepted the 5.5% rise in my FY 2021/2022 assessment. However, for 2022/2023, my assessment has risen an additional 13.7%, totaling 19.2% over two years. This is above the 10.8 citywide average. I do want to thank Real Estate Department for sending out Mr. Miller to discuss my home valuation. Bottom line is that as a homeowner, the city must mitigate this astronomical rise in property values and the burden it is placing on homeowners, especially retirees like myself. Many communities grant tax reductions to senior citizens to mitigate such dramatic increases in property values. For example, my 96-year-old mother on Long Island, in the same home for 69 years, benefits from a STAR program, School Tax Reduction Program, which provides an exemption from school property taxes for owner-occupied primary residences. Considering the hyperinflation in the economy, the bidding wars over real estate and other frantic upcharges on items such as vehicles, the real value of tangible assets is disguised by such behavior. Property owners who provide a large portion of the city revenue should not be penalized over these temporary market conditions, which will provide a windfall in revenue to the City of Suffolk government. Government should not experience unjust enrichment from unrealistic and unsustainable rising property values. Many Virginia communities have reduced the tax rate, such as Prince William County by 12 cents, Loudoun County by 9 cents, Fairfax County by 3 cents. Suffolk's 2-cent token reduction amounts to $72 a year for me provides no real reduction in the burden of the tax rate. The reduction of 25% of the personal property tax benefits those who purchase vehicles at above fair market value, and rewards non-property owners while not addressing the substantive issue, inflationary home prices. Lastly, I requested a meeting with Councilperson Goldberg to learn and discuss why this windfall revenue was necessary to fund city operations, excuse me, and was ignored. Having made minimal addresses to council, I'm skeptical that comments matter, and expect the council has already agreed on what action to take regardless of public input. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good evening. Julia Young, 5000 Summer Harvest Lane, Suffolk. Thank you for this opportunity. Last week, I spoke on the real estate assessment, the tax increase. The gentleman who spoke earlier certainly outlined a lot of information that a lot of citizens, homeowners, are experiencing. I cannot read that chart, and I am a new citizen in Suffolk, Virginia. As I said last meeting, I moved from Georgia, and the tax rate that I am experiencing here is outrageous. The other thing I can say about that is I have not a clue what I'm paying for. I'm being taxed, but I don't know where my taxes are going. I asked, and I was told, general funds. When I look at the general funds, what that incurs, it is not really affecting me in some of the areas. For instance, in Georgia, and I have to refer back to a place that I've lived for 41 years, but in Georgia, we had a homestead exemption. Here, we have no kind of exemptions for seniors. And as a senior citizen, I can truly say that we are not getting anywhere near the kind of increases that you all are asking from us. And I say you all, meaning ever who's making the decisions on the tax rate that we are having to endure. I believe this year, Social Security increased by 5% the cost of living. According to the report here, tax rate for Suffolk increased by 10.81%. According to what's on that chart, and I believe it said it excluded new construction. My house was new construction. So that means that my rate, according to the assessment for this year, was 115%. There's no way in the world anyone can justify how you're going to increase taxes on an individual for 115%, and especially a senior citizen, when the only thing that we have been given is a 5% increase. So I'm asking you all to reconsider the tax rate. I've been told by the councilman that it's already in effect, and there's no changes. But I'm asking for a reconsideration of that tax rate and a reduction. And I have appealed. One of the councilmen came to me and said, you need to make an appeal. The appeal was made first, and I have done that. My time has expired, so I thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we get our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm Pamela Brandy. I am one of the leaders for Pewsville Civic League. I do live at 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, 23321. However, I am speaking for the residents of Pewsville, especially our senior citizens. I agree what was said by the last two speakers. However, also in Pewsville, we doing a lot of rapid development, and you're targeting military. And they get all the discounts and everything, but then it falls back on the elderly. And again, like it has been said already, the elderly cannot support and pay all of that. However, the elderly is our foundation. And with that being said, when we look around what's going on in Pewsville, and not just Pewsville alone, but in Pewsville, I'm gonna target that because I'm starting with Pewsville first, you're racing everything up on the elderly. The ground level, the tax... taxes, everything, and you're flooding out the residents. They have came to you before, we have asked, and I've asked, about having your commissioner come here and talk about some taxes and different things that goes on, and it has been a deaf ear to that as well. We asking you all to take a good look of what's going on, and these issues are not new. They're old. You've heard it before. The residents are speaking out. We're asking you all to do what's in the best interest of the residents who are being paying taxes, that have been supporting you all in some of your decisions that you all make, but we're asking you all to look at what you're doing. Everything comes through City Council, Planning, Budget, City Mayor, and we ask the question, and I agree with the lady that just spoke about being able to see clearly in the room what's on the board. We can't see. Every time a map is put up, you still can't see it, and then again, you put it on the website, it's so small. Show us. We ask for transparency, and we've been saying that forever. Transparency, be clear. You come out to city, speak at the civic league meetings for the residents, we speak, but you're not listening. We're asking you to consider what we're saying, because we're not going to stop coming, we're not going to stop speaking, and we have a right as residents to know where our money is being spent at, and we ask for it to be written in plain English and simple terms so everybody can understand where their money is being spent at, and it's not happening. So again, as all have said, we want transparency, we want it written clearly, understandable for all to understand, the elderly as well as the youth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
I'm Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue in City Suffolk, Pewsville, Virginia. I'd just like to say, tonight, we talked about paper streets in the work session, but there's a whole lot of things you all don't know. I was born and raised in Pewsville. Taxes have been gone on ever since I've been in Pewsville and way before then. Yes, 100 years ago, maybe, those streets were paved, but guess what? On those paper streets, people are still paying taxes on the lots, on their properties. And you say, "Why can't one person gather with another person and fix those streets?" Well, before our time, 1974, before the merger, they said that the paper streets were maintained by VDOT first, and then when city took over, by the city. It was also stated, when did these paper streets get started? When they were in the inception, when the old gentleman plowed the tractor, plotted every street, the same plots that you are using today, 1995. I have a copy of that for any councilman who don't have one and don't know about it. Every street in Pewsville was a paper street until VDOT decided to put some pavement on those streets. So those streets that you're saying that you can face a house to now? Yes, because VDOT paved those streets. So every street used to be a paper street. So if you're taxing people who can't even use their properties, but you're telling them somehow they need to get with somebody else to make a street? That's not fair. The city has money to do whatever they choose to do, and the city can pave those streets because we don't have no drainage, we don't have no sidewalks, we don't have no gutters, we don't have no underground wiring, but you're telling the new developers and the landowners who've had these properties for years that they need to do this to a street? Name one street in Pewsville that have those things. Even the $400,000 and $500,000 homes that are being purchased today, they don't even have it. And you ask, are the people upset about it? Are they worried about it? Are they talking about it? Yes, because now we have military, and all the homes are resubs as soon as they leave out. So military's not getting what they deserve. Militaries usually have all the amenities in their neighborhood, but since you've bombarded us with military housing, it's time to give us some amenities. And for those on paper streets that you don't plan to do anything about, it's time to give them their monies back. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Get our next speaker, please. Do we have any of, anyone else who would like to speak? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. There is no action necessary at this time as the ordinance to effectuate the real estate rate for fiscal year 2022-2023 is included in item number 10. And we will move to item number 10, which is ordinances and adoption of the proposed operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2022-23 and related ordinances. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. At your April 6th of... Thank you. Work session, we had a presentation on the operating budget and capital budget for you, and Tealyn, the Director of Finance, gave a detailed overview of that budget. Also, you had your public hearing at April 20th, and now, tonight, is the time that we consider action. So with that, Tealyn will provide, or Ms. Hanson will provide a overview of the budget, more brief overview of the budget tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening again. I am here to talk about the budget one more time. I promise there are less slides this time than the previous two. So, once again, you've seen, you've seen these before. This is the fiscal year 23 proposed budget for all of the funds of the city and the, and the schools as well. You'll see the total at the bottom there is just a little bit over $767.5 million, including the general fund, at just over $263 million. You'll see the, the Capital Projects Fund and all of the special revenue funds that the city has, as well as our business-type funds, and the entirety of the schools' budget there at just a little bit under $233 million. The highlights from the budget, once again, we are proposing a 2-cent reduction in the real estate tax rate, taking it from $1.11 to $1.09. We are proposing a 75% personal property assessment ratio for cars and trucks that are less than 2 tons. We are proposing in this budget to fund $8.4 million to provide for a full, the first full year of cost of the compensation studies, step plans that were voted on and implemented. We have proposed 52 new positions to address staffing throughout the city, including fire and rescue, as well as planning and some other departments. We've included some additional funding for fire and rescue overtime, as well as police and parks, parks and recreation part-time. All the capital projects that were approved in year one of the CIP are included in the capital budget. The refuse and stormwater fees remain the same, and we are proposing a modest increase to the water rate and the meter service charge. What are the next steps? We would ask you to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2223 operating and capital budget and related ordinances as presented by the city manager, or to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2223 budget, operating and capital budget and related ordinance with any amendments that the council deems appropriate. And with that, I am happy to address any questions that the council has.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. The aforementioned ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Any questions? Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett.
Are there any amendments that we're bringing forth tonight, City Manager?
Got you on?
Yeah, you got me on.
Okay. Say again.
Are there any amendments that we were going to bring on tonight?
Councilperson Butler Barlow.
That would be up to council, should they would like to make any amendments to the budget tonight. There was speakers at the last meeting that you had heard some requests to. One was, of course, the mental health issue, the other was the Free Clinic, and also the Public Defender's Office had made some requests, and if councils consider any amendments regarding that, we would be able to address those.
Mayor, I'd like to just reserve my moment until I hear the amendments.
Okay, Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a, make a motion. I would like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022-2023 operating and capital budget as presented with the following amendments: to increase the general fund, local and regional organizations' funding by $45,500 for the Suffolk General District Court Behavioral Health Docket, and by $28,850 for the Western Tidewater Free Clinic, and also to decrease the general fund non-departmental leave compensation line item by $69,066, and the leave compensation FICA line item by $5,284.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilperson Butler Barlow. Do we have a second, or any questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett.
I'm going to give some lip service to it first. This budget has had a lot of massaging over the last few weeks, and I want to thank Tealyn and your staff, along with all the city staff here, and everybody that was involved in putting this budget together. I don't think that the average person even has a clue of the magnitude of what it takes to put this budget together, and we have to cover 17 different departments along with the needs of everybody out here, including our CIP. This is my 10th budget that I've been here. I fully support the amendments that were made to the budget. You know, we've got a school system that taken care of again this year and fully funded. And, you know, I just appreciate the time and labor and work that goes into this, and I just would like to say that we're in a good foothold in this city financially. We're within our guidelines. We're still holding on to that AAA bond, which is a lot of reasons why we're probably here today, in our financial needs and wants and the things we do. But I can't say that this is not, this has been about the best budget out here so far. We've gone back and forth over the years, believe me, but this has turned out to be a very good budget this year. We're fortunate that we've had the funding to be able to do some of the things we're doing, even coming through a pandemic. So with that, Mayor, I'm going to second her motion to approve the budget as Ms. Barlow stated.
Okay, we got a second from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Johnson.
Well, I'm going to take advantage of this. I'm going to do a little bit of grandstanding for a moment. My intent tonight, and I was to come back and talk about school funding. We, school board has done a tremendous job presenting a budget that has given all of our teachers fantastic raises, looked after their staff, looked after the facilities, and I had a hard time trying to figure how with all the money we were putting into this, we needed another $2 million. So being the simple person I am, I kept working on it, kept working on it, kept getting calls. Lots of controversy right now in parts of the school system, and originally, that's what I was going to do, but I've changed my mind, and I'm going to tell you why I've changed my mind. I think that we, as a council, have to put a lot more trust in our school system and put a lot more trust in that they're asking for this money for legitimate reasons. I'm explaining to myself because I've done too much talking the last two weeks to too many people, and I need to explain what I'm doing. The only way we're going to move forward in our school system is for our whole city to be involved and for this council to be really involved with it. I would like to see in the future, though, that when we go to put forth budgets, and I've told the superintendent this, that we all talk more and we all put it, put it together more so that the people understand, and I hope that as we move forward into the future, we are all a little bit more disconcerting about what we say and how we use the money. Schools have been fortunate this year because we've got lots going on, but we all know we have got a tremendous task ahead of us to provide the education that our children need. I had a script, I'm not reading it, so I'm just going to go off script for two seconds. And in order to do that, we have got to recognize that our school system has to be the best in the state, and it's not right now. I'm sorry, it's just not, but it can be, and we want to make sure that we've given this school board every discretion to make that happen. So if $2 million is all it takes, that's not a heck of a whole lot. We're going to spend more than that because we've got lots and lots to move forward with, but I want to see a more open line of communication among all of us, among our citizens, and make this school system what it can be. So with that being said, I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to put it on the board. We're just fortunate this year, all of us are, that the funds are flowing, there is money there, and there's money to work with, and the state has allowed us to give these good raises to our teachers, and I look forward to the fact that after this year, we all ought to be rolling and doing great things for our city. So with that being said, I support the budget as presented with, with the addendum.
Let's see what we got here. Vice Mayor Bennett. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion from Councilperson Butler Barlow with amendment, and seconded by Councilman Johnson. I'm sorry, Councilman Fawcett. Comments by Councilman Johnson, I'll get it right. And before we vote, I'm going to stick my 2 cents worth in and talk about this year's budget. And this year's budget is like really any of the other prior 11 budgets that I've dealt with, because it's brought a year of substantial economic growth, new real estate development, appreciating values on current real estate, all contributing to a significant, significant increase of revenue. And after reviewing the budget, my budget, you know, the city's budget, I'm pleased with the allocation of those additional revenues. You know, we were able to enact a new pay plan for all employees that provides for a step plan methodology rewarding employees for longevity, not only their position. In addition, we made substantial equity adjustments to adequately compensate employees at the bottom of the pay scale, and these changes will serve us exceptionally well in attracting and retaining employees at all levels, especially public safety, and that's where a majority of this funding went to. Monies were also allocated to improved services. I mean, considering the significant population increase we've had of over 10,000 citizens since the last census, and also enhancements that initiatives that would improve the quality of life for our citizens as well. When we look at the budget, it's a lot of money at 263, the operating budget, the other ones are funds. 31% of the operating budget is spent on public safety, 30% on education, so I wasn't real good in math, but it's 61% for public safety and education. All financial policies that we have, which we have four of them, they're all strictly adhered to, and I, and I want to thank Ms. Hanson and the city manager for once together, once again, putting together, I thought, a very clear, concise budget. It goes back four or five years. I mean, it's not light, I am perfect, but it's about as concise as you can get, and I appreciate you doing that. It makes it very easy to look at it going back several years to kind of see where we were, where we are now, where the increases were. But we have adhered to all four of those financial policies and actually improved significantly on three out of the four, which will bode exceptionally well when it comes time for the bond rating agencies again, and I'm, I would say cautiously optimistic, but if I was a gambling guy, I'd say, "Go ahead and bet on, you know, we'll be looking at AAA again." It should be noted that some relief was provided to our taxpayers by reducing the mill rate from 111 to 109. Was it enough? We went in the right direction. The personal property tax on automobiles being assessed at 75% of value versus 100% of value just about makes everybody whole for the inflated price of a vehicle for the last year because that vehicle's increased about 25 to 30%. So those individuals would have seen a significant increase in their personal property tax on their car. their cars. At our last work session, not this work, but at our prior meeting work session, we did have a presentation on tax abatement programs for seniors and disabled. I suggest that you investigate that to see if you qualify. Those numbers have risen each year with the cost of living. So the parameters are different every year, so you may not have qualified the year before. Maybe you do now, but absolutely take advantage of that. The mill rate being reduced and the personal property tax rate being reduced regardless resulted in millions of dollars of tax payment, tax savings for our citizens. Keep in mind, not everybody's values went up the same. Some didn't go up at all. Some went down a little bit. Some went up exponentially more. So what you're looking at is an average. I, too, was considering making a change in the budget in regards to school funding and the additional $2 million over and above what was provided last year. 65 million last year, 67 million and some change this year. You know, at some point, as members of council, we have an obligation to be vigil and stewards of the taxpayers' money, and this has nothing to do with the school system. The best part about this budget, the absolute best part about this budget, is there's so much money flying around. There's so much money being received. The money is there to compensate our teachers, to compensate our staff, and do what we need to do. That is job one, to make sure that our teachers are compensated appropriately, that our support staff is, that our bus drivers are. So don't even look at that. You know, most of that funding came from the state, and it's there. Lots of times when we've had this discussion, when we talk about reducing funding, then it could be at the expense of our teachers and staff. Well, this year, in my feeble opinion, that's not the case. You know, I wholeheartedly support our school system, but I also wholeheartedly support our taxpayers. The school system over the last year, year and a half, just like we have, and the city has too, has received significant funding from other sources, millions of dollars. And after reviewing the school budget, you know, there's some numbers that I had concern with. Well, I wouldn't say concern. We do absolutely need to support our schools, and these are things that I thought were not directly related to education, just some things that jumped out at me. We had, let's see if I can get these numbers straight, between CARES money and ARPA money and ESER money, I can't see why I wrote all my numbers down here. We had, give me a second. I'll find it someplace. It's $32 million and some change. Sorry, here we go. $32,418,134. Want to make sure I got the figure right. $32,418,134 total in CARES and ARPA money, plus an additional $540,018 that was reallocated last year. In addition to that, 41% of the CIP, roughly $23.2 million, has been dedicated to the schools, which they drastically need. I mean, every school system needs to have some schools. They need to be repaired. They need to be replaced. I mean, there's no question about it, but I'm just putting everything in perspective. There's also 3.575 million in the CIP for repairs. There's also another 2.5 million that was received from the state for HVAC. There's still $25 million worth of CARES money in this year's budget, and understanding we have to 2024 to spend that money. So the money doesn't have to go away. I'm just saying it's there. So when I look at a couple million dollars, I'm thinking to myself, why in a $232 million budget, what is $2 million? It's .87%, .87%. So I take pause in thinking, how, what could we do with that $2 million? Part of it, what I was looking for, but I'm not passing gavels and making motions and going through all that tonight, so that's not going to happen. But we had, a perfect example was we had $6.5 million budgeted in the CIP for administration, improvements to the human resources building for administrative offices for the school system. From the time the CIP was passed to now, which is about four months, five months, that $6.5 million's now turned into $9 million. It was $12 million for a second. Now it's $9 million. Well, where's that other $2.5 million going to come from? To take care of the school administrative offices. If the number went from 6.5 to 9, so wouldn't it be feasible, plausible, or realistic to think that we could transfer $2 million of that money that we're looking for in extra funds to a capital reserve fund to cover that expense? Because what's going to happen is the city manager is going to get with the superintendent, and we're going to find out that it's going to take nine or nine and a half million dollars to do something right now, because there needs to be a decision made on the school administration offices. We're coming to the point where that lease is getting ready to expire. We're going to be put in a corner again. Are we going to renew that lease? Or can we find the money to find a permanent home for the school administration offices? I looked at the budget. I mean, and I know a lot of this, the majority of the school budget is salaries and benefits, 86 and some change, 86%. So there's only been so much leeway that you can do there until you start messing with salaries and benefits. But at the same time, in two years, that budget has gone from 169 to 232. State funding this year was increased by $7,873,248, which makes it nice because that's where a lot of money's coming from to, thank God, take care of our teachers and our personnel. We get 28 additional positions, six teachers, four teachers assistants, a couple folks in admin. We got, and I'm not, I'm just saying we're adding a couple folks in admin. We get the same number of kids, same number of teachers almost, and we've got two senior level administrative positions and assistants. That will cost about 400 grand or a little bit with salary benefits and assistance. I mean, I'm not making, it is what it is. So this is what gives me pause. Citizens come to us and ask us for accountability. Citizens elect us to sometimes make hard decisions. Citizens elect us to do the best we can with what we have, and we don't have anything except for the taxpayers' money. I hear individuals come up who would say, "The city's got plenty of money." The city does not have any money. The city has your money, not our money. So it's incumbent upon us to make some hard decisions every now and then, and to reallocate the assets we have in as fiscally responsible manner as we can to where we can get our taxpayers the best return on their investment. So with that being said, I got it all off my chest, and unless somebody wants to make a substitute motion, then we have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I wanted to clarify for the record that the motion is to approve...
With amendments.
With amendments and the related ordinances.
Okay.
There are other ordinances attached to the budget besides just the approval ordinance.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the budget with the amendments and the attached ordinances.
Correct.
And we have a second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Council members, please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved. I vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we will now move to resolutions, and we have none. We do have several staff reports, and I got a little hit on myself on the tax abatement program, didn't I? I'm sorry about the tax abatement thing. In my head, I thought we'd already done it, but that's coming in just a few minutes. Our first staff report is Suffolk Transit update. Mr. Manager, please provide...
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time, I'll call Darrell Lewis, Assistant Director of Public Works, to the podium to start the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council and city staff. I come before you this evening just to provide an introduction to the staff report for the Suffolk Transit two-year outlook. January of this year marked 10 years since Suffolk Transit has been formed, and over that decade of time, we've had many improvements to the system, and it has grown. Today, we have six weekday routes and five weekend routes, including paratransit. Tonight, we will have Maria Tokowski, our transit manager, to give the staff report. And I want to note that Maria has been with Suffolk Transit from its inception, so she knows the system inside and out.
It's nice to see you all again. I was here a while ago when we were getting ready to make some changes, and now I'm here to kind of talk about a little bit of where we're looking to go in the next couple years with Suffolk Transit. So first things first, we currently operate six fixed route, bus routes, Monday through Saturday, with the exception of our red route. All of those fixed routes originate and terminate inside of the city of Suffolk. On weekdays, we are currently operating from 6:30 AM to 6:30 PM, with the exception of the orange, which starts at 6:00 in the morning, because that is a bit of a feeder route from the residential areas. So it allows people to be able to catch that very first 6:30 bus from your neighborhood to be able to get there and not have to wait a whole hour. Right now, our Saturday routes are operating between 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM. And then, of course, in addition to these fixed route services, we also have a complimentary paratransit system for ADA-certified individuals, and that operates within three quarters of a mile of our entire fixed route system. So it creates a buffer. So if you're outside of that, if you're unable to use the fixed route and you're certified for paratransit, it's a door-to-door service that allows you to be able to get where you need to go. Right, each of our vehicles is equipped with a bike rack, which is one of those things that we kind of boast during Bike Week, is you can get on the bus and your bike can ride it, too. We have anywhere from two to three places to put a bus on the front of the, a bike on the front of the bus. And what is nice about that is if you don't live directly near a bus stop, it's a good first mile, last mile, where you can ride your bike up to the bus, you can put it on the rack, and if you're getting off at a stop and you need to travel a little bit more, you now have a means to get there without having to walk. We also provide service at the two park and rides, so our bus routes operate through the Magnolia Park and Ride on Portsmouth Boulevard and the Godwin Park and Ride right off of Route 10. Right now, we are engaged in a rider survey. We have created and distributed a survey. It opened on April 28th, and it'll stay open until May 28th, and we designed the survey to serve multiple purposes. We are looking to evaluate the changes we made back in September to see how that's being perceived by our passengers. We are asking about the overall satisfaction of our system. We're trying to identify things that we don't offer that citizens might actually want to see. We want to identify any additional services that they would like to see, any changes that would make things better for them. And then our other piece of it is we're looking to gauge interest on offering a transit service on Sundays. Right now, we don't operate on Sundays, and we're trying to gauge what the interest of that is, so we can kind of see what that might look like and what kind of ridership we might be able to garner from that. These surveys have been distributed on the buses. We have online access via the website. If you go to the SuffolkTransit.org website, it's right there with a button to click to take you to take the survey. We've got paper copies at City Hall, Morgan Memorial Library, the North Suffolk Library, and over at Social Services, as well as posters have been placed in all of our bus shelters, at some of the parks and rec facilities, in the libraries, here in City Hall, that have a QR code that you can scan that'll pull you right to the website so that you have easy access to know that we're trying to garner feedback. We're also working with media, and we'll post this multiple times through the city's Facebook page to give updates and just let people know, hey, don't forget, we're doing a rider survey. We really want your feedback. That's how we know if we're doing things well and what we need to change. And then we're also going to be advertising it on the city's municipal channel. So going into what we're looking for as some of the proposed changes that are going to take place in FY 2024, these are just proposed changes. When we get closer to when that would have to happen, we would have to hold a public hearing before we could make any of those changes. But essentially, what we're looking to do here is our orange route is by far one of our biggest routes and one of our most heavily residential routes. So the look of what we're trying to do here is to now split that route into two routes. We have an orange route, and we have a blue route. This orange route crosses through multiple neighborhoods. It goes over railroad tracks nine times, so nine times a day, 12 hours a day. That's a lot of times over a train track, which can severely delay service if we have trains going in and out. And these would make, this would make it more direct if we had these two routes. The proposed new orange route would continue to serve the downtown transfer station. It would serve the West Jericho neighborhood, the food line on Portsmouth Boulevard, and Magnolia Gardens. And then on the western part of this proposed route, we would provide service up Factory Street and Carolina Road. Splitting the orange route from the orange to the blue, it addresses the goals, and it would help meet the needs of the riders with some of the overcrowding that does happen on that route, especially towards the beginning of the month. Wait times would essentially decrease from one hour to 30 minutes due to it now being a bidirectional service, and you're essentially creating more service within one bus loop than you would before when you go bidirectionally. This right here is a map of what our orange route currently looks like. As you can see, it's extremely heavy residential, and it is a very, very large route, crossing over, like I said, nine train tracks every time it's going out into service. This is what the new orange route would look like when we break it into the two. So you'll see that we've pulled the Lake Kennedy area off of the actual orange route, and we're serving more of the West Jericho and, you know, the food line and all of that with this particular route. And now we're providing that bidirectional service because it's going to go up and down East Washington Street four different times when it's in the process of going through its route versus just the two times it does now. The proposed blue route would be very similar to the realigned orange route, but this is now going to serve those neighborhoods that are south of East Washington Street, and it'll serve Carolina Road and Collodion Street, which is near Social Services. And this route would also operate Monday through Saturday. And that's kind of what this particular piece would look like. So now we're making it, we're covering all of the same area, but we're now making it easier to get on the bus by going bidirectionally, and we're going to help with some of that overcrowding that happens on that orange route, and making it more reliable with time because we're going to cut down all the train tracks that happen in that one particular route, and it'll break up it always having to meet the other buses at the downtown transfer station, too. So you're going to have some time to get into the downtown transfer station and all of that with a more direct route, which will be very helpful when you're trying to travel because you don't want it to take you forever to get where you're trying to go. As a well here, we would propose to add our red route to our Saturdays. It's the only route right now that does not operate on Saturdays, and it would pretty much make our service consistent Monday through Saturday. All of the same routes that run on Monday through Friday will also run on Saturday. So there's no having to remember what I need to do to try to use, try to get to the places that the red route goes during the week on the weekends. Right now, because the red route does not exist, we do make sure that certain areas are served by another route at this time so that we're not leaving anybody out on a Saturday. The other thing we're looking to do is increase some of the connectivity that Suffolk has to some of the areas outside of the immediate downtown Suffolk area. We have done a smart-scale application and has been approved for new buses for a new commuter route, which will provide service from Suffolk's industrial park area to the city of Portsmouth's Victory Crossing. If anybody's familiar with Victory Crossing, it's a very big transit hub. Crossing. If anybody's familiar with Victory Crossing, it's a very big transit hub for HRT. There's multiple routes that come to that particular area. So this now is going to allow people that are trying to get to work in the city of Suffolk from some of those HRT routes to actually have a way to connect to Suffolk to do so. Right now, we have two connections to HRT up in the northern part of Suffolk. So this will actually create an actual route that's going to pay commuters back and forth to be able to give better access to jobs. One of the things that we've gotten quite frequently is people not knowing how to get out of the city of Suffolk or get into the city of Suffolk via transit. So we're trying to address that with this creation of this commuter route. The other thing we're looking to do is create a commuter route between Suffolk and Windsor. So we've had a conversation with Olive White, and their Board of Directors is really excited about going in with a joint application for a smart-scale project for us to create this commuter connection between Windsor and Suffolk. So once again, being able to get people that are in Windsor that might need some of the services and things we have here in Suffolk that don't have a way to get here, and then people trying to maybe get to work from Suffolk down to the industrial parks. So this will allow us to create, once again, more of a connection between some of these outlying areas that the city of Suffolk is very close to, that a lot of people are trying to go to and from. Another piece of this connectivity thing is we're in the beginning stages of looking at what transportation needs would be specific to places like Chukka Tuck, Whaleyville, and Holland. So we're going to begin that research process of trying to figure out the citizens in those areas, what it is that they need when it comes to transportation needs, so that we're going to make sure when we create an on-demand zone, which will be a scheduled ride, that'll take you from point A to point B, that we're going to create it in the correct areas and make sure that we're taking them to the correct destinations. We don't want to create a system, and then it doesn't actually help anybody. So we're going to start that process of trying to get any information we can. So if you have any constituents that are getting, have questions about service, or they have service needs in some of those areas, please send them my way, so I can start to get an idea of what it is that we are looking to do for that. And then the other thing we are constantly doing is we are always trying to make improvements to our bus stops to make them safer and more accessible. We added that bus shelter to the county in Webb's, and now there is a sheltered stop. It's back away from the road now. No one has to stand in the road to wait for the bus. It's got a bench. It has a trashcan and all of that, and we're seeing usage of that since we've done that. We expanded our concrete pad we have up on Hillpoint Boulevard, so we can add some benches and a trashcan to that one as well. We have already created a concrete pad on Fifth Street to help with safety and accessibility. We do have some ADA clients that use the bus in that area, and they were having to kind of wait in the middle of the road, so we have fixed that. We are right now in the process of getting ready to make improvements to the suburban and Portsmouth bus stop right in front of the food line. We've gotten a lot of requests for a bench, at least a bench, out in that area and a trashcan, so we're getting ready to start working on that. We have figured out where to put a pad up at Nansmith High School. Same thing, we've been getting some requests for a bench as means to have a way to stand, to be a little bit more comfortable while waiting for the bus. And we currently actually have plans to improve our Dillon Road and Nancy Drive stop. Right now, you're pretty much standing in a ditch, and we're going to close in that ditch, and we're going to put a concrete pad there to, you're not standing in the middle of the road, as well as our Holland Road stop, Holly Lawn Parkway right on Main Street near the Kroger there. And then we're looking at things we can do with Main Street Marketplace to see if there's some way that we can add a bench of sorts near the sidewalk. And then up in Restless Beach in Burbage Circle, because we've gotten a request for some kind of a shelter or something up there as well. Someone was interested in seeing what we could do in that area. That is all I have for you. If you guys have any questions, I am more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Council, questions or comments? I did like a couple of things. I heard Chukka Tuck mentioned. Trying to get some out there for a while. And in regards to the 2026 smart-scale funding, have you got a number for that or a feel? Is it just to replace the buses, or would they give us new?
This would be brand-new buses for that commuter route. So these would be brand-new on an F-550 chassis, 27-passenger vehicle with the ability to have two wheelchair lifts. So, I mean, it would be a brand-new vehicle. These are not replacing vehicles. These are brand-new vehicles specific to that commuter route.
Okay. Do we have any idea how many vehicles you're talking about?
We put in there for two.
Putting in for two?
We want to have it being able to go both directions. So we want to have one that can originate here in Suffolk, taking people that way, and we want to have one that stops first out in Victory Crossing to take people in.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, one more time, questions or comments? Vice Mayor Bennett, let me get you turned on here, and then we'll do Councilman Goldberg. There you go.
Yeah, just a couple of comments with the connection to the industrial parks and other places where people are trying to get to work. It looked like to me you were trying to expand that more, so you'd be able to accommodate more people.
Yes.
That's trying to get to some of these jobs out, not downtown, that's out in the outlined area. So I think that's a great thing to be able to do that. But the other thing we need to look at there at Suburban Drive, we put in a bus stop there for the food line, as we mentioned this, I think, to the manager, might need to look at putting a crosswalk light there, because a lot of people crosses right there at Suburban Drive, coming across, going to food line, and they have to cross that six-lane highway. So I think we need to look at trying to improve that with a crosswalk light or something there at the Suburban Drive where they can go to food line.
Yeah, I think that would be a good place for one, because we do have a lot of traffic going back and forth there.
Right. But overall, I think it's great, and the mayor just had, I jotted out about the smart scale, but that's great that you explained that, and people know where that money's coming from with smart scales. Thank you.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the report. I do appreciate the shelters. I want more shelters in those areas, not just the pad, but more shelters. People have to wait, and it's raining and what have you. They need to be covered. So anything you can do to help increase that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. And I'm actually, I've been thinking outside of the box, because there are some things where you have benches that have covers on them, so it's not as big as a shelter. But we can actually, there are different things that you can put at a bus stop that have shelter associated with them. So we're looking at some different options to be able to more readily put shelters at different places, because those bus shelters are quite large.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilman Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Excellent presentation. I'm glad to see that you guys have decided to go ahead and put out that survey. Of course, over the past few months, I've been bringing up the fact that I've been getting a lot of concerns regarding the Sunday route. My question to you is, when the, what was it, May 28th? Is that the date?
Yeah.
The ending date. Once you compile that information and get a feel of how people feel about that Sunday route, how soon after that would something be implemented?
That would be considered what we call a major service change, because it would be an addition of an entirely new day. So we would have to do a public hearing, so it would take a little bit of time. We have to post that for at least 30 days. If we were to do something like that, I can't promise it'll happen as fast as I may want it to, just because of funding reasons. But ideally, we like to make a lot of our changes all at the same time, so if we could maybe do it with that FY '24 set of changes. And if funding's available, it's always possible that we can do it before that. But it would take a little bit, because we'd have to figure out the best way to design the route, too, to make sure we're doing all of the service that actually needs to happen on a Sunday. So I would say, I mean, FY '24 would be the latest, that I would attempt to try to do that.
Okay. I guess with the issue being that people are concerned about getting to and from church, to and from a job, to and from food line, Walmart.
And if it's one of those things where it comes through in the survey that it's really more of a, it's an immediate need, because people are not having access to jobs, and it's not allowing them to, you know, work when they need to work and all of that, we always will take that into account, and we can utilize that as a way to make things happen faster. I don't want to make someone sit here and wait till FY '24
Right.
To be able to take a bus on a Sunday if they need the service sooner than that.
Right.
So really, a lot of it will depend on what we get back in the survey. So I'll be able to tell you more about that once May 28th happens.
Okay. And I'm pretty sure if the survey come back, and there is a need for the Sunday route, that we can find some way of funding that. So again, people won't, I mean, I would hate for them to have to wait another six months. But, you know, just, I know we have to wait on the survey and see.
Yeah, yeah. And that will definitely help us see where we can go with that. And I understand that. We did the same thing when we made our changes. We determined that our red route now had service to a place, and it only ran six hours a day. So we pushed up being able to add hours to that. We found the funding to make it happen, because it had to, because we were cutting out an entire set of transportation to medical offices, because it only ran six hours a day. So, yeah, I mean, absolutely. And I will be able to give you more information as I compile all the results at the end of that survey.
Okay. And I definitely like what you guys are doing with the orange route. I think that's a great idea. And two, limit the time, at least from an hour to 30 minutes. You know, people won't have to wait a whole hour before the route, the bus come back around. But reducing that wait time to 30 minutes is great.
Yeah, we definitely want to do that, because there are some people that can shop in a very quick period of time, and then they were kind of stuck. And now we're trying to make it, we're trying to supply more frequent service without having to have another bus running. So that has definitely been our goal. So I'm glad that you are appreciative of that, because we've been trying to make things easier for people, so that transit's something that they're excited to do.
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All righty, Counsel, last chance, questions or comments? Here, Nun, thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, our next staff report is, relates to the tax abatement program. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. At this time, Harry Cromer, Director of Social Services, will come to the podium to give us an update on the tax abatement program. As you know, we're in the middle of the applications for that program at this time, so we thought it'd be good to have it in front of you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I and Mr. City Manager. It is my pleasure to kind of give you a brief overview of the tax relief program. It is very appropriate that we have this, because we had some comments tonight about, you know, tax relief. So we want to give you some information that hopefully will help everybody in the city of Suffolk. Okay, the elderly and disabled tax relief program for tax year 2223. The program is primarily for elderly or disabled persons, and it provides for the reduction of real estate property taxes for the home and up to 10 acres of land for certain homeowners. An application must be filed between January 1st and June 30th of the taxable year for which release is sought. So right now, in order for individuals to be considered for tax relief, they have to get their applications in by June 30, 2022. And right now, the Department of Social Services determined eligibility and will notify customers via mail of the eligibility decision. We have also a veterans' real estate tax relief program. Now, this is the Commonwealth of Virginia exempts taxation for the real property, including joint real property of a husband and wife of any veteran who has been raided by the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs as having 100% service connected permanent and total disability who occupies the real property. Now, the key is it's 100%. It has to be 100% permanent and totally disabled for a veteran. The exemption applies to the qualifying dwelling, and it also provides exemption for the real property from the land, not exceeding 10 acres upon which it is situated. Veterans only need to reapply for benefits if his or her principal resident changes. So once we have determined that a veteran is eligible for the program, that veteran remains eligible unless there's a change in the residence. And those applications are normally taken throughout the year. There's no timeframe. We will take them from January to December, unlike the other program, which has a time limit. Now, the eligibility is based on a combination of age and/or disability income and the total assets of the homeowner. If eligible, the exemption and reduction would apply to the following tax year. So in any questions as far as reimbursement, about mortgage companies and so forth, that really should be directed to the Treasurer's Office, because the Department of Social Services is only responsible for making an eligibility determination. As far as any other questions as far as that's concerned, it should be referred to the Treasurer's Office. So here, the basic requirement is that you must be at least 65 years of age or older or permanently and totally disabled. You need to be the owner or partial owner, and you must occupy the property to be exempted. The total gross income, combined household income of the homeowner, the spouse, and all the relatives residing in the dwelling cannot exceed $67,622. And the first $10,000 of an income of a relative is exempted. Now, we'll say that this number, the 67622, is what it is right now. The first of the year is subject to change, because it's based on the cost of living adjustment, so these numbers fluctuate. That's what it is for this current program, but it will change. And you will find that a total of $7,500 is excluded from the income of a homeowner who is permanently and totally disabled. Income of anyone else living in the household which is not related to the owner is not counted. And you will find that the net combined financial worth, exclusives of the home, and 10 acres upon which it is situated cannot exceed $303,075. And when we're talking about the net worth, we're talking about the resources, whatever resources they have, whether it's bank accounts, CDs, trusts, whatever. Again, repeat, it's January 1st to June 30th. Want you to keep that in mind, because we're in May now, and the clock is ticking. Now, the application, if you want an application for tax relief, it can be emails, it can be faxed, or it can be mailed. You can also pick up an application at the agency, which is located 135 Hall Avenue. I will say that we also have, as far as tax relief, we do have walk-in hours from 9:30 to 11:30, Monday through Thursday. We also have individuals that can call in and get an appointment outside of those hours. So we kind of got a hybrid approach. We have some, because of the pandemic and so forth, do not want to come in. So we do try to make it available for anyone that's interested. Again, if eligible relief will be applied to the real estate tax bill due in that year on December 5th and June 5th of the following year. If you want additional information or you want other documents, you can call 5144870, which is our main number, or 514422, or you can call the supervisor. The number is not here, Ms. Mary Holmes, 5147390. And again, we want you to know this is only for tax relief. It does not, for real estate, it does not impact your personal property or your income taxes. Here, you will have a copy of the percentages for is how much we have, depending upon the income, you may get 100% tax relief. You get 50%, if the income is from $51,713 to $59,667. You get 25%, it's $59,688 to $67,622. Again, you see the maximum income limit is $67,622. The financial worth is $303,075, and the cap for the single-family median value is $282,500. And that, too, does change as well on a yearly basis, but that's what we have, we're working with right now. And something that you do not have, let me just say, for this current year, we have, so far, have 104 new applications that we received. We have VA application, we received 151. And people that have to recertify, reapply yearly, there was 1,184 applications that were mailed by the department. And so far, we've processed 731 of those applications. The reapplications that we mailed were 581, and we've received 300 of them back. So we are constantly working to make sure that anyone that qualifies for the tax relief program really get that benefit. But as I said, it's a tight window. It starts January 1st every year. It closes June 30th every year. It starts January 1st every year, it closes June 30th every year. And that's pretty much my presentation. I will entertain any questions you may have about the program.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cromer. Counselor, questions, comments? Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for a great presentation, sir. I just have one question. How did you derive that 10 acres?
That's in policy, we just basically, it's already set in statute, I believe, so we don't, we have no control over that. That's set in the policy.
Was that, is that made by council, the council implement that, or is that something state regulated?
I think it's state regulated.
State regulated? Will you?
Our program is done by ordinance, but the, but the state has specific requirements on what can and can't be in the ordinance. Whether that dollar, exact dollar amount state or not, I'd have to look up the code section, but it's been a while since we looked at it. So the Constitution sets up taxes as they allow certain, certain exceptions have to be allowed by the Constitution and have to be adopted by the General Assembly to give us permission to apply them to folks. So I'm not sure exactly all the requirements on that particular code section, but I can get that information to you.
Okay. I guess my concern is, I mean, it's a great program. But what about those persons that have 20 acres who qualify, but the thing that disqualifies them would be the amount of acreage that they own? So if you can just check into that, because I would like to know.
And I think that's a legitimate question, but I guess as any program, you know, you have a cutoff.
Right.
Because you can't service everyone that may potentially qualify, because even in some other programs that we have, individuals may be like a one or $2 over, but still they don't qualify. So there is a cutoff with every program that we actually are responsible for. And unfortunately, we would like to service the majority, but the more you serve, the more money it's going to cost. So you kind of got to balance it out.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. And my comment is, I think, I know you say the clock is ticking, which is true.
Yes, sir.
And I know people has, has a lot of difficulty now with income, with everything going up. And I know the baseline has been set, so I'm hoping that we will be able to make sure that we get as much information as soon as we can out to the people. Because I had a person came to me Sunday at church and asked me about the program. So I think we need to get as much advertisement out there about the cutoff date as we can because just like I say, it's May already, so you've got only another month, just about a month and a half to go, so it takes some time to do that. So I appreciate anything that you can do to try to get the word out to the people and I'll try to help as much as I can as well.
Yes, sir, most definitely. As I said, and just remember, if it's stamped dated June 30th, it's on time. If it's emailed on June 30th, it's on time, but we would not advise you to wait to June 30th because anything could happen. But if we receive it and it's stamped dated or emailed June 30th, then it's, or faxed, then we accept it.
Okay, once again, thank you, Mr. Cromer. I think we had our presentation at a very opportune time with tax time coming up, so as the Vice Mayor alluded to, and so did you. Please check to see if you qualify for any of these abatement programs and get your applications in. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to motions. We have several this evening. Our first is a motion to schedule a public hearing on May 18th, 2022, to adopt, to consider the adoption of an ordinance authorizing lease of certain real property located in Lone Star Lakes identified as tract 3091 for a period not to exceed five years, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Williams, Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Council Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, please prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. unless canceled. Motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor, thank you.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams?
I second that.
Second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members, please prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time?
Yes, Mayor Dooman, we have a number of non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services policies and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Dennis Yure, 1744 Millwood Way, representing Self, regarding a reduction in the real estate tax rate.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and Mr. Manager. My name is Dennis Yure, and I reside at 1744 Millwood Way. Unfortunately, I'm a little day late and a dollar short here because I was unable to attend the work session two weeks ago regarding the budget because I was out of state with my 96-year-old mother. I've previously addressed and talked about other communities that are significantly reducing the property tax rate. You still have time to amend that tax rate because the budget that you approved a few minutes ago does not go into effect until 1 July. I would ask for a 10-cent reduction in the income, in the tax rate on the 10 mills. That would be a lot more neutral for revenue considering you had a raise from the property tax increases last year. I know personally as a retiree, I'm not getting a 10%, 10.8% or cumulative 19% in my case, rise in pensions, investments, or savings accounts. You know, a little concerned, I think it's Councilman Johnson and Mayor, you're both talking about the rise in revenues in the city. And it almost seems to me, as an uninformed citizen maybe, gleefully that you have all this money to spend. When I have to make my budget, I don't have that latitude to have all of this largesse of additional rises in revenue. Because the city revenue, as the mayor pointed out, comes out of our pockets. So your rise in revenue is a decrease in my revenue. And I don't receive any benefit of this rise in property values unless I sell my home. And then just like people now are experiencing with rise in cost of vehicles, they're not on the lot. And if you sell your vehicle for more than you paid for it, what do you do to purchase another vehicle with that rise in inflation? So I kind of wonder, you're getting a whole bunch more revenue, you said, from the taxpayers, and thank you for acknowledging that it is the taxpayer money. But why must everything else be rising as soon as you get a dollar, you spend a dollar? You know, the state has a rainy day fund, you know, I'd like to be educated, do we have a significant rainy day fund here? So in summary, you still have time to amend the budget, and I would request that you seriously consider a 10-cent, 10-mill reduction, similar to what Prince William County has done with 12, close to Loudoun County at nine, and at least Fairfax County reduced it three cents. Thank you.
Travis McKenny, 2804 Lake Cahoon Point, representing Self regarding Suffolk Public
Okay, I'd really like to have these handed out. Good evening, and come to you, let's start as a mild curiosity on my part, dealing with some things with our school board. This has actually turned into quite a mystery. So if you give me a chance here, we'll start the narrative. October 9th, 2020, the school board member Riddick stated that he received numerous correspondence to change the name of a school system Pioneer to Southwestern Elementary. Addressing Mr. Riddick's concerns, the school board set a special hearing, and that special hearing was held on November 9th, which Mr. Johnson, I believe, attended, to explore the name change from Pioneer to Southwestern Elementary. On December 10th, the school board voted to change the name from Pioneer to Southwest Elementary. Now, the minutia and the arguments and all the reasons why they made this decision, it was a curiosity to me because Mr. Riddick said that this was an injustice, somebody was being harmed along these lines about this school name not being named Southwestern. So in my paperwork chase that I have here in front of you, I have a list of foias that I sent to the school board trying to chase out this curiosity. Foya 1 references correspondence that all the school board members had received. I got blanked on that FOIA request from the school board. In the discussion on December 10th, when they discussed the cost of the project to change the school name, the price tag that the superintendent stated was $44,700. Direct quote from the superintendent, I wish you had stayed in the building because some of these foias respond to him as well. Superintendent, we would actually use year-end funds to be able to cover that. This is not a major budget item for us to be able to do. The $44,700 is not a major item on a budget for the school board. We'll just cover that with the end of the school year funds. Some minutes to debate afterward where they discuss the school colors, the mascots, sports, utilities, administrative costs, and everything else like this. Somebody threw out a figure of $3,700 to change the name of the marquee, to change the school from Pioneer to Southwestern. Verbatim, because everybody can go to YouTube and you can look up these meetings, verbatim for the motion that's passed, and this is key. Mr. Riddick moved that we honor the request of the Savovians who came out to the hearing to change the name of Pioneer Elementary School to the name of Southwestern Elementary School. Motion was passed, I believe, six to two. So here's the question that I have, because work has been performed at Southwest Elementary School. Where did that money come from? Because the school board has yet to make a motion and pass a motion to authorize any expenses to change the name of the school. The school board has yet to produce a statement of work to encompass exactly what does that mean by change the name of the school. The school board has not addressed administrative costs, the school has not addressed anything. The only thing that the school board voted for specifically was change the name, but nowhere did they ever allocate any money to make that happen. So I've got FOIA requests 3, 4, 5, 6, trying to track this money down. Because when I asked the school board last time around, nobody knows how much money has been spent to change the name of the school. Now again, the argument to why the name of the school was changed is only the curiosity part of it, because it seems to me that six people showed up at the public hearing, four to change, two in opposition, and a couple of council members stated that where does this mission creep in? When we start this process of changing a school name because six people got their feelings hurt back in 1970, whatever that was all about, the continuing cost of changing the name of the school is constantly going to be there. Somebody is funding or has funded to change the name of the school system, but these FOIA requests, two of them have now, eight days in without any response from the school board system. Nobody wants to answer, where is the piggy bank? And I think that that's atrocious. I heard the council member talking about chasing down 2 million. I can't chase down 3,700 if that's in case, indeed the case, of what's going on in that school system. We talked about, the young lady here earlier talked about transparency in budgets. A lot of people said, and this is my problem with the school board, you don't have any transparency with these people. You know, how much money was expended to change the name? Where's the statement of work? Where's the contract? How was it approved? Who authorized the work? These are simple questions that the school board should be able to approve, but yet in all these FOIA requests that sit in front of you, as I said, I'd like for you to take a look at them, you can see the wordsmith game that they're playing with me on this, I have no response or no answers to them. So I'm going to address the school board here along these lines on the 14th, and I'm going to rework some of these FOIA requests that I put in. But I will note that the city treasurer, whoever that might be, you're on notice because one of these foias are now coming to you, because the school board said, hey, we don't have a treasurer, our fund transfer comes from the city. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Kelly Hangler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, representing the Crittenon Eclipse Hobson Heritage Civic League regarding city and state statutory and governing authorities.
One moment, sorry. Good evening, Council Honorable Mayor Dooman, a recognition to you. Thank you, Ms. Butler Barlow. Good evening. So it's very easy to pull off of the internet the org chart for Suffolk. Okay, at the top of that org chart is citizens. In 1896, the civic leagues, which is those persons who you see come up to this podium, I myself come 30 minutes across and down country roads to come here. My cohort president, heritage president, needed to step aside, we're going to send some prayers out to their family tonight, okay, to not be here tonight. 30 minutes to get here. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to take 15 seconds to do this, that when persons are addressing in any way, shape, or form from the Diaz, persons coming from the civic leagues, you know these civic leagues have been here, including Crittenon Eclipse's and Hobson, since 1946 respectively, okay, and as well as back here with Pewsville. Persons have been operating to promote civic engagement in this city for a very long time, going back before the American Revolution. So tone, I've been asked to come up here, I got a phone call on the way here. We don't shout down our citizens for coming forward in civic engagement for whatever reason they're before you. We thank you for your service, okay? But it appears to be the same council members who do it over and over again. The concerns that are brought here are brought because we have a climbing aging population, okay, that by 2050 is going to be an overrun to the entire U.S. economy. It is our interest to keep those elders in their homes per federal mandate because it costs too much of all of us as taxpayers to displace them. There's nowhere to send Ms. Daisy, okay? They need to be vital in their homes. They need to have historic surveys done on Pewsville, that's why you're having a problem there. The city of Suffolk is non-compliant with the National Historic Preservation Act agreement that it signed with the Department of Interior in the 1980s, and according to those ordinances, you do not have a historic citizens' commission. If you had done historic survey, you would know the condition of the infrastructure in each one of our existing communities that never received historic survey, not as a hindrance, but as a capacity building, as a tourism, as a recognition of cultural heritage. But that has not happened. So another complaint has gone up to the Department of Interior because we will not keep coming as the civic league, as the persons, some of which are 10 generations here. We will not continue to see, and please forgive me, I don't speak for them, our Nansman Indian Nation refused to be given the powwow grounds on the Nansman River. It belongs to the citizens of the city of Suffolk, give it to them. That is another complaint that is before our senators and congressmen. There is no excuse for it at all, no reason or rationale. And so when we take this org chart and we see the citizens of the city of Suffolk, and we know that the National League of Cities and the National Civic League created the city manager council balance to bring forward structure after the Civil War, we know this. And we know that the administration is not the voting body sitting on this Diaz, okay? So guess what? The comprehensive plan that was rolled out with steering committees without a staff presentation, look at Virginia beaches, you can look at, it's gorgeous. And it tells you that the plan to move forward and the surveys verifying that thereof in phase two, phase one, was to present to the planning commission, which is appointed by the city council, by state statute, statute 15.22204, and a number of other statutes. Specifically by whom? Our state general assembly, doing what? Representing our citizens. That appointed body of esteemed members is so appointed because of their technical knowledge and skill of our planning commission. No presentation was made on how we were going to approach the comprehensive plan. No presentation was made therefore so that they can make amendments and recommendations before our city council. We essentially, by esteemed body, are letting the Economic Development Department of the city of Suffolk turn this city upside down and how its citizens respond. City of Suffolk turn this city upside down and how its citizens respond. If it is not, per what has already been ordained, it shall not be heard, and that shall not stand. We are the civic league of Cretton Eclipse and Hobson. We stand behind the civic league of Oakland, Chukatack, and Sandy Bottom, the entire Barrett's Neck, and the founding settlements, okay, here in Nansman County. We demand for the 19th time to have an up-to-date 1988, 1989 representative historic survey under the Department of Interior agreement with the City of Suffolk, so that we can outline once and for all all the assets of all of our freedom villages, all of our historic settlements that still exist today. I thank you, and I ask you to please adhere to FOIA, okay? Please adhere to the statutes. Please, let's reset the organizational chart so that what is occurring actually matches that. Good night.
Fellow Burns, 2210 East Washington Street, representing Self regarding public safety.
I'm just here to show concern because I've been a resident of this city for just over three years at this current address, and there has been 10 shootings at my apartment community. And I'm simply here to request that law enforcement increase patrols between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, because this is one, I can be standing outside and they come in and it's not residents, they're non-residents entering the property and shooting up when children are outside playing in the play, and that's alls I want to do is to see if you and the police department can agree with housing authority to increase safety patrols on the property at night, because it's getting, it's like a war zone out there. We had a shooting at 12:05 AM. A man died behind the building. We had a shooting there eight, 10 days ago, a 13-year-old was shot in the arm. And I tried to contact my council member, I tried to contact housing, and it's just a big throwaround. We need police action out there before children are killed. That's alls I have to say. Thank you.
Pamela Brandy, 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding concerns of Pewsville.
Again, I am Pamela Brandy, one of the civic league leaders for Pewsville, Chesapeake, and Suffolk, combined together. There have been a lot going on and said tonight, and I'm going to start right back from what was said during your work study about Pewsville and Paper Street. Last time I checked, back in the day, everything was dirt roads everywhere. Then the city said that they're going to help out the residents, we're going to build up streets, okay? But yet, you didn't build up all the streets, and currently, Pewsville has been coming out quite often, the civic league leaders and residents speaking out about what's going on in Pewsville. And now you're acting like, oh, some of these things you just don't know about, you don't know different between the paper street, flag streets, plaques, as you talked about tonight. However, you all are allowing developers and builders to build quickly and rapidly in Pewsville. And you showed a nice map, a picture of Y Street, and something that was built on Y Street, a Paper Street, okay? You showed one that has, you know, trees all there, and then you show a picture on Clifton Street where, you know, it's cleared out and everything, but your own ordinance and all says that if you touch a Paper Street, you have to build that street up completely. To be able to give utilities and water and oil to those three new military homes that you all just built, allowed builders to build, you had to touch the Paper Street. But yet, those builders were not made to do what you all telling the residents to do, is to bring that street up to par. And it happened not once, not twice, but three times, Father, Son, and the Holy Ghost. Y'all need to take a look at what you're doing. And every time Pewsville Civic League tell you something about it, then you all of a sudden say, oh, we didn't know about it. But yet, you have your little trucks driving around all the time in Pewsville you can't see, or you just abusing the citizen funds by just having the people drive around in the truck that don't report what is actually going on. But yet, we say what's going on, we provide emails, we provide pictures, and that same picture that you showed at the beginning of the planning, of the report that you just did in the work study, I will send you pictures of that same house where all the developer did was put a driveway pipe there, but it rained and the water goes nowhere, it's flooding. Also, those homes were designated for military people. You also allowed the builder to put tropical sewers in their homes, you raised up the ground level, they can't use most of their yards, but children shall be children, okay? So, as the children decide to play on the hill, they're going to dig there, they're going to do all kinds of things. But who's going to check to make sure that septic tanks are cleaned out like they should be on schedule? And water does go downhill. And again, yet, VDOC turned the streets over to you all, but before VDOC, anybody took over, the resident took care of everything, and the water flowed through Pewsville without a problem, and it was clear. Not now, has toxins in the water, but you all don't hear us telling you that, which comes into our homes, okay? We need you to take a look at that. And then those Paper Streets, those, you said, all of, all old Paper Streets, they were mandated and tractor them pulled out, there's no new streets, they all old, just like the conversation we're having is old. Yet, you all decided to, you know, allow the builders to do all the development around Pewsville, and you have told us how much money is going into Pewsville. We don't see it going into Pewsville yet. You all just recently had signs put out on Town Point Road that you're going to clean out the ditches. Have you came by and checked out the work that was done? Unset. You dig a bunch of dirt, this time you took the dirt away, but guess what? Where does the water go? Nowhere. It sits there. It has a lot of debris, trash, and guess what? Summertime is getting here, it's getting hotter, y'all got some big mosquitoes and bugs running around in Pewsville, and you're not doing anything about it. When are you going to stop talking about something and start actually doing the work? Our elderly and disabled people, and matter of fact, speaking of that, you all decided to do some work and everything, and you don't let the residents know what's going on?
I'm sorry, ma'am, but your time has expired.
Okay, well, thank you, ma'am, I got one last thing, and I will be gone. You all doing some work, and you don't let the community know about it. We had a disabled child could not get home because of the work that you have and have the trucks all over the place? Again, it goes back to transparency and communication to your residents. It is time for you all to do what you say, care about the people, talk to the people, and then act upon what you truly hear we say. A change is now, not later. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wayne White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor Lefus, but members of council. Smile, because I just want to say one thing. The last time I was at the city council meeting, I spoke to Police Chief Chancellor, and I said, look, they are flying up and down Pewsville Road. I said, maybe we need to put a sign out there to say, hey, speed limit 25, this is how fast you're going. That was on a Wednesday. Thursday, guess what? It was done. I want to applaud him for doing a good job. We appreciate that, and it seems as if the people are slowing down a little bit, because I be telling them, I said, now, when the policeman stops you and give you a ticket in our neighborhood, it ain't going to be because you didn't know how fast you were going. But thanks again for what you're doing. We had, I think we were Mr. Wise earlier, and he made a statement about a private street, and he said a private street was buildable. Okay, now, be careful when you say a private street you can build on, because guess what? That same Paper Street is now going to become a private street, and they're going to start building on a private street. That was one of the statements that he made that I really, really didn't agree with. In case you didn't know, somebody asked the question, how many Paper Streets are in the City of Suffolk? Well, I don't know, but I can tell you, we have 22 Paper Streets in Pewsville. I think you all got a copy of this sent by my wife to the council. I had a conference with the treasurer earlier today while he was having his first session, that's the reason I was down in his office, but we want to do one thing in our neighborhood at the park. We want to increase the parking, the parking lot in the park, and that's something that we hope the city council and public works and everything will get with us about doing, because if you've been to the park, if we have any kind of activity, and you got 11 parking spaces, you know, there's no room for actually National Night Out, Juneteenth, or whatever, so we would have to park inside the park, you know, in order to do that. But that's one of the things that we want to do. Then I also asked the treasurer, I says, if people can't build on these Paper Streets, why are they paying taxes? So, you know, I got a long spiel that everybody pays taxes on the properties, but I just wanted to say that it's something that we can look into to see if the land is not buildable, and also, my last issue is going to be on the Paper Streets. Okay, there was a time that if there was three houses on the street, when VDOC had it, that they would put it into the system. Okay, we had a couple places that had three houses, and they didn't put it in the system, and the one street is Anderson Street, and that's where you guys decided that you was going to take those two houses, so that there it won't be three houses on that street, because two of those houses you guys are talking about taking and putting the retention fine on. So, I want you to actually look into that. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
Again, council, tonight, I want to talk to you about a little history. I know Mr., my vice mayor's been here a long time, so he knew everything, but I just want to talk to the rest of you about a little history. First of all, the city charter is on the internet, the history of the incorporation, and you all have the big sign saying in 1974. Okay, the consolidation of Nansman County and the City of Suffolk took place in 1974. But before that time, like I said earlier, we had streets. The streets weren't carved out by the city, they didn't belong to the city. As a matter of fact, our residents in the entire City of Pewsville was the City of Porchman. We got our mail through Porchman, and all the information we got, we got through Porchman, but then we incorporated. So, they changed the street names, some of the street names have been changed, some are still the same. So, I just want to read to you, we're getting ready to come upon the comprehensive plan again. The comprehensive plan, we know it's a 20-year, sometimes a 30-year, changes that's supposed to happen in the neighborhoods and in the cities. So, for now, let me just tell you a little history of Pewsville, so that we won't repeat the same things in 30 more years, okay? All right, the powers, we're talking about the powers, you all have the general powers here. The City of Suffolk shall have and may exercise the powers set forth in 15.1837 through 15.1907 in the Code of Virginia, and this enforced on January 1987, and as thereafter amended. In addition thereto, the city shall have and may exercise all powers which are now or may hereafter be conferred upon or delegated to cities of the first class under the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth, and all other powers pertinent to the conduct of a city government, the exercise of which is not expressly prohibited by the Constitution and laws, and which in the opinion of the council are necessary or desirable to promote the general welfare of the consolidated city and the safety, the health, the peace, the good, the order, the comfort, the convenience, and morals of its inhabitants. That's us. We're part of the city now. Pewsville is part of the city. You all may not have known this, the reason my husband spoke of you about 22 Paper Streets, because when Suffolk took over, over the Pewsville area, they closed, let the streets close up. They're saying from a 30-foot to now a 50-foot, everything in Pewsville was 30-feet-wide streets, and they used to run in and out of each other. I used to play there, I grew up there, I was born there, so I know those streets better than any of you up here today. And another thing, we had four streets that you can go down through Pewsville, in and out. Now, you closed it up, so we just have Town Point Road. And Pewsville Road, wow, when Interstate I-664 was built, you all were told to take care of Pewsville Road, because you knew that traffic was going to come down off of that interstate and to keep straight through, even before Bayberry Cove was built. That used to be a large field. My daddy's car landed over there, by the grace of God, and he didn't get hurt, jumped a ditch. But we still have ditches, and you're saying people need to fix the street and put in, what? Sidewalk? Gutters? We have that same bus that the lady spoke about, it comes down Pewsville, down Town Point Road. Do we have a bench to sit on? No. We have a sign saying the bus is going to stop here, and that's it. Do we have a shelter over our heads for the rain? No. Do we have a sidewalk so the people can stay out of the street while the other cars are coming, before the bus come? Because like you say, now, they're shortening the term. Well, if they don't shorten the term in Pewsville, we got to stand out in the street, and if it's raining, we got to back up almost to the ditch, because we have no drainage, we have no sidewalks. I heard her say she's going to fill a ditch, just so they could place a space for people to stand to catch the bus. Well, I'm telling you, all these things, because this is history, but we don't want history to repeat itself, do we, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor and council persons of today? No. We want to move forward, you say? Well, moving forward means we're going to have to start looking at all the communities. And all the communities, guess what? Are getting military families, which we love dearly, my husband's a veteran. We're getting lots of military, and like I said before, they want the same the same amenities that the other militaries are getting in their neighborhoods. Now, you talk about, oh, we can't do the things in Pewsville because the paper streets have high water table? Yes, because you didn't, you never drained it.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but that concludes your time. Unless you want to wrap it up really quick?
I'm wrapping it up, because I'm gonna send you a letter. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, we'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
The following individuals have been nominated for appointment to the respective boards and commissions: Claudine Campbell, the Human Services Advisory Board, and Lavinia Miltier, to the Southeastern Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program.
Counsel, Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
And Councilman Ward?
Second.
You're second from Councilman Ward. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This time, we'll ask if Media and Community Relations Director Tim Kelly has any announcements.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Well, if you're looking, well, let me look there in just a second. There we go. All right. Now we can look, look at the screens. So we're talking about the biking movie that was mentioned earlier. Of course, it's gonna be at Bennett's Creek Park this Saturday, May 7. Again, they're emphasizing to people to bring their bikes if they can. But if you don't, that's quite all right as well. You're welcome to attend. Movie ET will be playing. The first 50 people with a bike, though, will receive a package of Reese's Pieces. So that's incentive enough right there. There'll be a concession area. Pets are welcome. They must be on a leash, though. Parking will open at 6:00. Bike parade's at 7:30. There'll be craft and bounce houses you can enjoy while you wait for the movie. The movie starts about 8:15. And of course, it is free and open to the public. Suffolk Farmers Market season opens this Saturday, May 7. It'll be at the Suffolk Visitor Center Pavilion. The weekly market attracts locals and visitors searching for freshly grown, freshly, fresh, locally grown, I should say, fruits and vegetables, baked goods, meats and poultry, eggs, jellies, jams, honey, pickles, and handmade artisan crafts. The market operates from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturdays through May, November 19, excuse me. Market is situated at the corner of Constance Road, North Main Street, directly behind the Suffolk Visitor Center. Opening day will feature a variety of homegrown and handmade goods, the Teeny Tiny Farm Petting Zoo, live music by Uncle Jack, and concessions by Cross Winds Cafe. As with all market activities, admission is free and open to the public. More details can be found at their website, SuffolkVAFarmersMarket.com. Jennifer Moore has been selected as Assistant Director of Media and Community Relations and started with the city on April 22. Jennifer's with us tonight. I'll ask her to stand, so everybody can welcome Jennifer there. She joins our Suffolk team after almost 10 years with Norfolk, Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, where she served as Communications and Government Relations Director. Her background also includes marketing, business development, and leadership program coordination. She's a graduate of Virginia Wesleyan and an alumna of Lead Hampton Roads and the LEFCO Leadership Program. As a courtesy, Suffolk Mosquito Control maintains a do-not-spray list. Beekeepers and any citizen can be placed on this list. All you have to do is call 757-514-7609, or email mosquitocontrol@suffolkva.us, and they'll put you on that list. As noted earlier, Suffolk Transit, of course, offering a rider survey, the survey to evaluate recent route changes, inquire about rider satisfaction, and gauge the interest of providing a Sunday service. A link to the survey can be found on the Suffolk Transit homepage. The survey concludes on May 28. Paper copies available on the buses, Suffolk Public Library, City Hall, and Social Services. Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue's Fire Marshal Office wants to advise citizens, there's no open-air burning allowed from May 1 through September 30. This restriction comes from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality and was also adopted as an ordinance by Suffolk City Council in 2007. The reason? Well, to improve the city's declining air quality and reduce the number of responses for refuse, grass, brush, and woodland fires. The open burn ban includes all types of burning, from burning in a barrel to commercial land clearing operations. Now, failure to comply with the burn ban can result in a fine of up to $2,500 and one year in jail, as well as the bill for extinguishing the fire. Citizens are encouraged to take advantage of the city of Suffolk's bulk pickup service to remove yard debris or to carry the debris to a local landfill for disposal. Now, in cases where large quantities of debris involve, property owners may want to consider hiring a contractor to remove that debris. Commercial fire pits and fire bowls are considered recreational fires by city code, so those do not require a permit. If you'd like more information on open burning, contact the Fire Marshal's Office with the city of Suffolk. Suffolk Public Library's Home Delivery Service is a pilot program available to a small number of customers in a limited area of Holland. The Home Delivery Service provides contactless monthly delivery with a personalized selection of up to 10 items. Postcards are being mailed to homes in Holland to raise awareness about the home delivery and to give people the opportunity to contact the library if interested. People who are interested in the service should email the library or call them with any questions. The Virginia Employment Commission Veteran Employment Services and AARP Employment Services have returned to the Suffolk Workforce Development Center as of late April. AARP is accepting walk-ins at the Suffolk Workforce Development Center, while Veteran Benefits and Employment Services are by appointment only. Residents can make an advance appointment by phone at 757-514-7742. Residents seeking a COVID vaccine are encouraged to visit vaccinatevirginia.gov or contact the State Call Center. Two events that are coming up, one to note, tomorrow, actually, there'll be a vaccination clinic at Kings Fork Middle School from 3 until 6. The event is open to students ages 5 and up, with an accompanying parent or legal guardian, along with Suffolk Public School staff and families. And there'll also be a mobile vaccination clinic on Thursday, May the 12. That one will be held at East End Baptist Church at 1056 Portsmouth Boulevard. That will be from 12 to 5 p.m. And as we always do, we leave you with the ways we reach out to our residents and business owners. And the number in the upper left-hand portion of your screen, 514-4000, if you want to get connected with city services, maybe you have questions, we have staff there to assist. With that, say good evening to all.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, sir.
I will now move on to announcements from council. And Councilperson Butler Barlow, you are up.
Hold it. Damn. Gotcha.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an interesting evening, a lot of interesting conversations. And I would just like to say to everybody that comes to speak and everybody that's listening, we're not perfect. We're not getting everything right. But we're trying really hard. And I feel like, I just want to say that this council has the best interests of the citizens of Suffolk at heart, even though you may or may not believe us all the time. But I think we, as a group, work really hard to make the best decisions for our citizens. And it's, it's not always easy. It's not always, like I said, perfect. But we're, we're trying hard. And we're, we're, I'm speaking for myself personally, we, I always have the best interests of the citizens at heart. So appreciate, everybody is not always happy with that, but we're trying. That being said, would like to recognize a couple of things that I've done since the last meeting. I enjoyed the Keep Suffolk Beautiful banquet. They had a volunteer appreciation banquet that was great. The mayor and vice mayor and myself attended, enjoyed it very much, and so appreciate what that organization does for the city of Suffolk. Healthy Suffolk had another successful Gardens-to-Go program last weekend, and gave out about 100 garden kits to local citizens, and was very well received. And hopefully, everybody is gardening, and it's okay to put your tomato plants out now. Also got to attend Chief Chandler's swearing-in. Great honor to participate in that event. And congratulations again. We can't say it often enough. And lastly, I would like to say thank you to the Chuck Tuck Ruhrington Club, who invited me to be their speaker on Monday. Appreciate the conversation and the support and the dinner. And appreciate always to share with that group, and also always with the civic leagues. Appreciate their input and their, their comments about what's going on in the city. And with that, I will say goodnight.
Councilman Johnson?
And first off, I'd like to welcome Jennifer Moore. I know Tim and your department are anxious and happy to have you. Welcome to Suffolk. And I'm gonna be very brief, because I'm just gonna give out a little bulletin here on traffic on 58. Local residents know it is really getting difficult to get through if you're heading west, so use the back roads. But when you use the back roads, be very careful. The farmers are out, and there's lots going on. So go slow and watch speed limits. But the back roads are not so bad. Indian Trail particularly, we use that every day, and it gets us through pretty quick. And with that being said, I'll just say Happy Mother's Day to everyone. We've all got a mother. And have a great weekend, and hopefully it's gonna be a beautiful one. Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be real brief. Tonight, we did some great work. We passed the budget. Congratulations, City Manager, on your budget for this coming up here. Now it's time to, well, our budget, city budget, but it's time to hit the bricks and go to work, right? So I appreciate all the hard work. Jennifer Moore, thank you for electing Suffolk to be your place of employment. Glad to have you. Our fire and PD folks, public safety, have been extremely busy this last few weeks. We've had a lot going on in this city. It's just nonstop. A lot of things that are happening that are not so good. So just keep aware that those guys and gals are out there doing a good job. And when you get a chance, be sure to thank them once in a while. It doesn't hurt. And for Sunday coming up, Mother's Day, for all the mothers out there, I want to tell you, I hope you have a wonderful weekend, a wonderful Mother's Day. I hope to see you on the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna be brief also. First, I would like to welcome Mrs. Moore to the city. Thank you very much. Welcome, welcome. Chief Chandler, congratulations again. Thank you, sir. I would like to follow up with a couple of things that I talked about last council meeting. The speeding on the 300 and 400 block of Brook Avenue, Mr. City Manager, if you can check with Public Works, see whether we can get some signs put out in that area, slow down kids playing. That would be, maybe that can, if people see those signs, they will slow down a little, a little. Same thing with Amarrick Avenue and Hollywood section of the city. Maybe some signs there to indicate the kids playing in the area. Then I had, had some observations riding through the Wellaville Borough, specifically the Salt Suffolk Pleasant Hill area. There's a fence line across from Colloden Street and Knight Street that has vegetation and small trees growing through the fence. If we can get somebody to take a look at that. Also, on Colloden Street and Forest Street, has a lot of no spots and dips as you turn into Forest Street from Colloden Street. I mean, there could be some damage, some serious damage done to people's cars if they hit those holes. Also, the corner of Colloden Street and Knight Street, just grass and weed issue there. I think the grass is probably about three or four feet tall now. The vacant lot on Spruce Street across from Mill Street, again, grass and weeds, extremely tall. Vacant lot across from 612, 616 Cedar Street Extended, same issue, grass and weeds. A vacant lot next to 211 Spruce Street, grass and weeds. Vacant lot next to 234 Spruce Street, grass and weeds. Vacant lot next to 405 Spruce Street, grass and weeds. Again, I would like the citizens in Wellaville Borough to know that I want to hear from you. My information is on the website, along with every council member up here. If you need to get in touch with us, our information is on the website. Please reach out to us. You elected us as your representative, and we want to hear from you. We want and we need to hear from you. So with that said, I would like to say Happy Mother's Day to all you mothers, and you have, everybody have a good night.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. You cut yourself off. There you go.
First of all, I want to talk about the budget. I think we did the right thing tonight. The budget was good. Appreciate what the manager presented to us, so that we could, we could pass that. Sorry about, people feel uncomfortable with their taxes. It's part of life, I'm afraid, that we do the best we can in trying to make sure we meet the needs of the city, along with trying to be responsible to our citizens with what the taxes are. We do the best we can in reducing those taxes if we can, which we did by two cents, which I think was a good move on our part to help out. It might not have been what some wanted, but it is what it is. And I think we've done the proper and professional job that we were given to do. So I stand with the budget. I stand with what we did. And I think we had a good evening on that. Ms. Moore, congratulations. Look forward to having you with us. I tease a lot about that department, so I will be teasing more. I had a meeting last night, the mayor and, I mean, the city council, city manager put on with his staff over here at the library dealing with the property on Wilson Street. I thought it was a good meeting for having people come out. I wish Moore had come out to talk about it. It's a small piece of land, but we'd like to know what the citizens in that area of Wilson Street would like to do and have there. I thought we did a fair job with trying to get some information, but I thought the meeting went well, and I appreciate the effort that was given for that. I would like to talk about one thing that it's becoming more and more important, and I think Councilman Fawcett raised an issue on it, and that is the crime that we see in the city and what's going on. And it's not just the crime that we've had. It seems that there's more and more shootings taking place in Hampton Road, not just here, but all over. You hear about it, and you see about it, and what have you. But it's more in Suffolk than we've had in quite some time. I would like to sort of wrap our arms around this and see what we can do, maybe, maybe do something with this. And maybe have some meetings and talk about it, and see what we can do. Maybe city manager with the mayor, with the police chief, that we can sit and talk about. Maybe there's some other things that we can do. You know, the only thing that we really can do in this run is, is react to what happens. And, and I think we do. We do that in a quick basis. We get, get on the scene. But if you see something, if you know something, people, call someone. Call the police. Let them know what you see. I don't care what it is. If it's, just call them. If someone is in your neighborhood, you don't, you don't recognize, you don't see, call the police. Let them come out. Let them check. It might save somebody else's life. So please do that. It's, it's becoming a little scary for a lot of neighborhoods and for a lot of people. And with that, on a happier note, I'd like to wish all the mothers out there Happy Mother's Day. Have a great day, and enjoy your families. Thank you very much.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, also, I'd like to welcome Ms. Moore, and also congratulate Police Chief Chandler for swearing-in. Normally, I don't get no letters, but I did get some letters. I get letters, but not like to have received. And I had a big concern of the shooting, especially in College Square. I wanted that community to know me and the police chief have talked, and he, he's understanding, he aware of it, and he say that things are gonna take some action. And I thank the councilman for what he said. I think if we sit and get on it now, maybe we need a couple of meetings. Like you said, talk with the people and let them express. But let's tell them what things can be done. You know, so I think that's, that's a very good idea. Paper streets, I think we had a good conversation with that. That is a delicate issue when it come to Pewsville. I know they keep coming up and talking about various things, but I feel that, you know, they can come as long as they want, as long as I know. What we trying to do, and Mr. Erwin did a good job. I don't want to feel that I was picking on him, but, you know, he did a good job and explained kind of well. It was so well that I think that we should go to Pewsville and talk with the community, and let them go ahead and get it off their chest. And some of the department heads we do have know how to see, slow up some of that fire. I mean, Kevin always do a good job. He used to do a good job, and I should go to Harborview, so I know he can, he'll do a good job. Al, you can do a good job, explain to them that we doing what we have to do. And I just want to ask Al a question. We giving Pews almost $7 to $10 million. Are them sidewalks included in some of this? No? Just for flooding?
That's the drainage project, the BMP, and there's work there on John Street.
Okay. Okay, 'cause some of the stuff they saying, if you ride down there, they don't have no sidewalks, and the speed limit and things, police chief Chandler for taking that up, but they might need some sidewalks and stuff like that, because you know, when they build a park, they build a sidewalk backwards going towards the woods, sort of going towards the community, when they first build the park. So that's something that, like Councilwoman Baller say, a lot of stakes have been made. And she did also say, we do care. You just got a budget where that's 8 and 0.
You just gotta budget where that's eight and oh, so we all care about different things going in the city. You might don't seem as though, but we don't get it right, only thing we do is change it to make sure. And like I said, that's what's so impressive with me. Everwine admit that it was some things that we didn't do right. People come up there and we keep listening to them as though they complaining, but it made sense for Al and you, Mr. Everwine to realize, unless what we can do, we can, let's go forward. Let's go forward. They feel that the developers get an edge. No, let's go forward. We can put that behind us and we move forward, get some laws and everybody's treated right. I think that'd be one of the, very important for that community. I also went to the recreation meeting, and it was well attended. I think some good answers. There was some good answers to the ax and a lot of concern. But what hit me mostly was the difference, how Suffolk is growing and looking at things different. What they want in the park is something normally they don't say, but they did say they want a garden. It's things that people are not looking for things they used to have. They want to make this city, I mean, their community peaceful and togetherness. It was a good, it was a good meeting. I really enjoyed that meeting. Also, I want to say happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Put an issue out, matter of fact, I put an issue out in honoring some of the mothers in Hampton Roads and most of the grandmothers, but I put an issue out this month. Councilman Johnson, thank you. The comments you made, again, comments you made by the school board, it was on time, and I couldn't say nothing. I had to wait till now, because that was, we do try to talk and get things right. Thank you for saying that. And I know it was kind of a hard situation, and I thank the mayor for letting out what he wanted to say, but still, we still care. We still care. That's a concern when you question somebody, I don't mean you against them. And sometime we get up here and you don't agree with somebody, but it seem the school board feel if we don't vote, we disagree. That's not, that's not true. That's not true. You know, we just concerned and want to know. Your other people who talk against it, they have a concern. So, you know, respect that, respect that. But like I said, the comments you made, that shut me right on the up, I'm fine. I just want to let you know, I appreciate that. With that, I'll say God bless.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items that just to comment on. Keep Suffolk Beautiful, I think that was a great turnout to honor, and that's the number of volunteer hours that they give the city is really great, and they are doing an outstanding job. So I agree with Councilman Bartlow that they deserve a lot of credit for what they do. Also, I went to Dr. Britt's unveiling of the stature of him in Norfolk at EVMS last Friday, and he was honored for all over the United States and the world, really, of his knowledge about medicine and things that he have done, just people that he have touched and made a difference in their lives. And he's a Suffolk-born person, grew up here, went to school here, and went on to greater, better things, went to school. And it stated there at the unveiling, some of his fellow classmates asked me why was he coming back to Suffolk? Said, "You can go anywhere you want to go to live." He said, "Yeah, but I want to be in Suffolk. That's where I was born and raised. I want to bring my talent back to where I came from." And that's what he've done. He could have gone where he could have made a whole lot more money, the way it said, where the big cities, but he chose to come back home. And he has really given so much to this state and to our city, because he have really given bonos to a lot of people in Suffolk. They go to his office and he will take them and not charge them one dime. So he has really done an outstanding job, and I think is the recognition of him being a person that he is, and with that, you should go down to EVMS and see the statue. It's probably, I would say about 12 foot?
I would say 12.
Tall? And with him standing up there, you know, like that, and I think it's something, it's a tourist attraction, that people should go and be proud of Suffolk, because he is really proud of Suffolk. And that's one thing, every time I've heard him speak, like the first or second thing comes out of his mouth, he talks about Suffolk and what Suffolk has done for him and what it means to him. So I cannot say enough about Dr. Britt and give him the honor that he so much deserved. And I'm hoping now that they're saying, well, he's still alive and they put that up there, and the sculpture person said that was the first time that he have ever did a sculpture of a person that still was alive. So that was an honor right there. That person came from Italy that did the sculpture. So now I think it's time that we can go ahead and name Human Service Building by him being so medical responsible and what he've given to us, and I'd asked for that one time before, but I would ask again, that we would put that name on the Human Service Building, because that's what he has really dedicated his whole life to, is helping people that's in need on the medical side. So I hope that we would reconsider that, look at that again, and if I need to make that a motion later on, but not now, because, but I would do that. I think we should do something here in Suffolk. Norfolk did that, I think we should have something here in Suffolk as well to give him that recognition. So I just want to say that. My next thing is, congratulations, Ms. Moore, welcome to Suffolk. I hope that you enjoy, you have a lot of leadership here, and you have some shoes that, you know, people say you have to try to fill, so I'm sure you're waiting to go ahead and step in that seat, will it fit? So congratulations again to you for coming to Suffolk. Chief Chandler, again, I've congratulated you before, but you had a great turnout, put your badge pending. I know your work is cut out for you, but I feel like you are man to step up to the plate and do it. And while I'm talking about that, today, Police Chief and some of his staff were at Hoffler, walking door to door, talking to people there at Hoffler apartment. And I happened to be in the area, and I was over there as well, because I know quite a few people that live there. And they were very responsive to them coming. So they are trying to get out there and touch those people and let them know that the police department are here to serve and try to help them in any situation that they might have. They can't stop shooting, or they don't pull the trigger. Only trigger that they can pull is the one on their gun. But these other people out there, they cannot stop that. All they can do is respond. But the citizens are the one that can help the police. If they see something, say something. Not wait until after it happens to make a 911 call. And it's wherein that a person can do it and not give their name, address, and all that. That's the reason why they have Crime Line. You can report any type of incident that you feel in your community that have some effect, could affect your life or anybody around you. There's nothing wrong with waiting for somebody else to do it, it's not to answer. You need to step up to the plate and call and report whatever's taking place in your neighborhood. That's how you help the police department. So I'm hoping that people will take that, listen to that, do that, and I guarantee that will solve some of the shooting and other things that is taking place in the communities. If we would just look around ourselves and the people in those areas, and anything doesn't look right, you feel it doesn't look right, there's nothing wrong with calling. That's what they are here for, to answer calls. But if they don't, you don't call them, they don't know. And then after it happens, then you call them. It's too late. Need to be called before that. So that's my tidbit on that. I just had to sort of mention that, because I was there at the Redevelopment Housing Authority today, and the house, the apartment that we went in with the same apartment where the young fellow, a few, it hadn't been long ago, got shot, right there where we was at. And they doing all the renovation to improve the quality of life there. But again, people have to say something. But I hope that everybody, and I'm not trying to beat anybody up, I'm just telling you facts, I think it's important that we really do it. Also, the Redevelopment Housing Authority, redoing a parkeritt and Cypress Manor. Cypress Manor now is gonna be called White Marsh Plaza. It's now gonna be called Cypress Manor. Beautiful, beautiful construction going on there. They hoping it'll be ready for people to start taking occupancy in November. So that is a great tool there, and I'm hoping that this is gonna help giving people more pride in where they live. So again, I do appreciate the Redevelopment Housing Authority for what they are doing. Mother's Day coming up. Happy Mother's Day to all that have mothers living, and those of us that doesn't have a mother. I'll say this to you, if you have a living mother, give her all the time that you can, because after she's gone, you're gonna thank back. If you haven't given her that time, you might wish you had. So love your mother, because she's the one that birthed you. Do everything you can to help her in any way that you can. Love her, let her know that you care. Again, happy Mother's Day. Good evening.
Alrighty, well, I will go ahead and wrap it up. Actually been a lot going on the last couple of weeks. I too attended the Suffolk Clean Community Commission Volunteer Awards, recognition, Keep Suffolk Beautiful. Very impressed with the number of people there. It's probably 60 to 80 folks. Very, very diversified group of individuals from throughout the city that are very dedicated and did a lot, a lot of work. I can't remember how many tons of trash they picked up and how many tires and, you know, it's nice to see. I think that's about as much volunteerism as I've seen in one room in a long time. And actually enjoyed what they did, and it was very well received. Let's see, what else we got here? Amadeo's actually had a first anniversary, and the reason I mention that is because Amadeo Obese's great niece was there, and it was a very nice event in Amadeo's restaurant in the back. There's a lot of history back there, a lot of pictures and collectibles in regards to Obese. So I appreciate the Mullins putting that event on. Chief Chandler, once again, just jump on the bandwagon. Congratulations on your appointment. You do have, as the Vice Mayor alluded to, you know, we got some work to do. And from that standpoint, the manager and I, over the last months, and you also have been talking about the formation of a public safety committee that will be happening sooner than later. The manager and I, in addition to that, will be attending another mayor's forum in Chesapeake with all the other Hampton Roads mayors and their managers to address issues that, or to talk about issues that we may be able to address as a region, like taking illegal weapons off the street. That's something that we can do as a region, maybe have a concerted effort to do that. The sharing of information, sharing of information about perpetrators, sharing of information as to what works in a particular city with their particular issues. And one of the things that I spoke to was the fact that, you know, lots of times on DIAS, we've spoken about maybe downtown allowing our businesses to stay open to 2:00 in the morning. Well, we can learn from Norfolk, because Norfolk's had their issues downtown late at night, 1, 2:00 in the morning. So before we decide to make that move, then we'll have some background. That's the kind of thing we can learn from them. Portsmouth, Portsmouth in particular, has, it seems like, you know, and Shannon doesn't care if I talk about, we talk all the time, Shannon Glover, the mayor of Portsmouth here, we share a lot of information, and I consider him a good friend, but, and I'm somewhat familiar with Portsmouth too, because I've worked and lived over there for a while. They have particular communities that have the majority of the crime, and how are they addressing it? What initiatives have they put forward? I will be perfectly honest, and in my opinion, Suffolk is behind the eight ball. I mean, we're behind the curve. And that has a silver lining, the reason we are behind the curve is because we haven't had that many problems in relation to, when you look at the size of our city and demographics and our diversity and how big we are, and our police force is really, when you consider the amount of dirt they gotta cover, probably as thin as anyone in Hampton Roads. And even with that, knock on wood, I mean, we haven't addressed some of these things because we haven't had an issue. So, but we need to get on board, get ahead of the curve, and use it as to our advantage so we're in a position to where we're not reacting all the time. Take the advantage we have right this minute of a 90 percentile approval rate of our police department by our citizens, and let's use that. I mean, those are the numbers. Let's not let it deteriorate and then try to react to it. So I've got confidence that the formation of this public safety committee, which will be, maybe work collectively or individual departments throughout the city, the manager, you know, the fire department, police department, sheriffs, everybody working collectively, and also have, open up avenues of communication. We talk about communication with our citizens. Our citizens in their neighborhoods, they know what, people that live in those neighborhoods will know what works. I don't know what works, we can guess at what works. But those citizens that are experiencing whatever they're experiencing in their neighborhood, they will be able to let us know, hey, I think if you clean this up, or you put some lights up there, or maybe if you get, you know, a little bit more of a police presence here. And we get people on board to be involved with something like a Neighborhood Watch. I've been doing some research, there's three or four different organizations similar to Neighborhood Watch, where you get the community together to work with the police department, because we will never fix it by ourselves. I read some quote somewhere, and it's just in the back of my head, you know, trying to address violence is not a spectator sport. Everybody's getting involved. You can't sit on the sidelines and wait for something to happen. So a little bit more of that. When it comes to violence, you know, I get calls lots of times, you know, it's, it's one word, but there's, it affects a lot of things differently in how you go about trying to solve it. In my little pea head, you know, I kind of break violence down into four categories. You know, what I call criminals, that's what I call an old school criminal. You know, you stealing a car, you robbing a bank, you know, or you assaulting an individual for something, or you stealing something, those are what I call criminals. And then we got gangs, they have their own thing. Then we've got drug issues, that's another whole thing. And then we have what I refer to as just societal issues. Those are the mental illness issues, those are the lack of supervision issues, those are just, it's just the fact that we as a society are willing to accept a certain behavior or a certain action that we had 20 or 30 years ago, we never dreamed as being acceptable. Or if not acceptable, at least not having the consequence that it used to have. I mean, when I was in school, my worst fear was the teacher would give me a note and say, "Here, take this note home to your mother to let you know that you didn't do right today." You know, that would be like a joke today, I'm gonna give you a note to take home to your mother. So things have kind of changed. We got a lot, a lot of work to do, and, you know, I'm confident that, are we gonna fix it? I don't think so. We're not gonna fix it. But we do the best we can with what we got. It's just like every day, I tell my salesmen, we're not gonna sell everybody comes to the door, but let's, let the reason that that individual did not purchase from us, let's make sure that's not our fault. Let's make sure that's not our fault. And it's the same thing with us. Things are gonna happen, because you can't be everywhere all the time. But let's do our to happen because you can't be everywhere all the time. But let's do our part to ensure that we're doing the right thing. I also attended the Suffolk Interdenomination, this always gets me tongue tied, Suffolk Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance revival. That's a mouthful. I think it was, was it a Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday? But, but Thursday was like Government Day and everything. And the president is Reverend Henry Diggs, who also did our invocation last year at State of the City. And I, I mean, he's just a good guy, you know. And, and I had to get up there in front of all these clergyman and say, raise your hand. And then I said, I got a confession to make. I got a favorite clergyman, and it's Reverend Diggs. It ain't you. And they all seemed to take it rather well. But, you know, Reverend Diggs knew that, I mean, I just didn't say it to be saying it because they're there, because that's how I've been talking to him for the last year and a half. You know, when I pick up, when he calls me, I says, how's my favorite clergyman doing? So it was, it was a good event. I didn't stay for the whole thing. But, and I'm sure Thursday went down well also. Friday, I went out to John Yates for a little bit, the middle school. Took my puppies down there, did a little humane society therapy dog stuff. And Chief, I want to let you know, your officers were right on the money at John Yates. Those guys, they had the kids eating out of their hands. I don't remember, you know, I get everybody's name confused, but you know, my little canine buddy, and you had a swat guy there, and they were trying on vests. And I mean, the kids were into it. And more importantly, your officers were into it. You had a drone out there. So, I mean, it was awesome. I'm not just trying to blow your head up. I mean, the guys I told, I mean, they, I was watching them for about 45 minutes or so before I went over to talk. And they were really engaged with what they were doing and engaged with the kids. And these are middle school kids. So those are ones, in my opinion, are the most vulnerable right in there. They got a elementary school, middle school, I mean, they start, they got the hormone thing going, they got stuff happening. And, you know, that's when they need a little bit of help. So I appreciate you sending your, your folks out there to do that. Ms. Moore, I didn't welcome you here, but welcome. You're working for a great guy and a great department. I'm sure you have a lot of fun, so much fun, you won't even want to get paid. But that's another thing, we'll talk about that later. What else we got? Public Defender's Office. That didn't come out this evening, but...
We'll be back.
Did you get it? I mean, I don't even got the memo. No, you don't, you can't get up?
We'll be back.
No, but I just, no, no, I just want to let you know that it was a consideration in tonight's budget, but there was an issue, technical glitch with state code and how money can actually go that way. It's not as easy as it looks. So just want to let you know, we are thinking about you. It's a good cause and everybody on the dais. We had talked beforehand and everybody was kind of agreeing and, and helping you with what we could do. So I didn't want you to go away and not be able to sleep tonight. Tomorrow, we have a prayer breakfast at 7:00 AM. I don't know how that works. We've got 7:00 AM. Prayer breakfast. And, oh, one other thing. I had a contest, I, for the last month and a half or so, I put out a little contest for the middle school students, if I was mayor essay contest. We had about 90 people that responded to it. And I cannot, we had an overall, we had a first, second place winner at each middle school. We had a first place overall, and his name is Judah, Judah, I know I'm going to mangle his last name because I don't have it in front of me. I want to say Barnaby or Barry B. Anyhow, great kid, had a super essay, and that will be published in the paper. I think the paper's going to publish. You going to publish that, Jimmy? Jimmy shaking his head. Yep. Okay. So Jimmy's going to do an article, plus I'm going to run it in, in one of my ads. I got some really, really cool stuff in it. I got to bet you this one thing. So the essay you were supposed to address, you know, anywhere from one to three issues that if you were the mayor, you'd want to fix. Of course, a lot of them think I can fix school lunches. I got nothing to do with that. But, and then identify the problem and how you would fix it. So one kid had written, he had actually had five things. And his fifth thing that he would do if he was mayor, this is important, he would tear down all the small Chick-fil-A's because they're way too slow. They need to come down and put the big ones up. So anyhow, he got the most original. So with that, I'll go to my quote of the night, and that is from Susan Gale. And I wrote her name down. I have no idea what she does. And it's a Mother's Day quote. And it is, mothers are like glue. Even when you can't see them, they're still holding the family together. And with that, I will say good night and ask for a motion to adjourn. You can't, you know, you can't do that. Councilman Johnson, playing by the rules.
So moved.
Make a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Now I do need a second. Push one. Okay, Councilman Ward. Just trying to keep this parliamentary procedure in. We got a first and second anybody discussing the motion? Here none. Prepare to vote. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk?
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.